Called to order the meeting of Williamsport City Council for Thursday, November 7th, 2019. It's 7:35 PM in Warren City Hall chambers. Council chambers, please rise and I'm going to present the invocation tonight and then remain standing for the flag salute. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we're just grateful and thankful for all the blessings we have in this nation. As we look around the world and see the deep and terrible problems others are facing, we don't have quite that level, Lord, and we're grateful. We want to be thankful, Lord, and not complacent about the freedoms and liberty we have. And, Lord, especially this week, as we've had local elections and statewide elections, we're cognizant of the fact, Lord God, that many don't have the liberty of choosing who's going to represent them in their governments and making decisions about how they're going to be governed. And, Lord, while each election has its own particular twists and turns and identity to it, it always turns out that the will of the people is what carries the day. And, Father, we saw that this week, Lord, and, Lord, as council members, we realize that each one of us is here as a representative in this democracy of the people to make decisions on their behalf. Lord, help us to never take for granted that sacred trust has been put in us, Lord. And with that in mind, we ask for wisdom and help and understanding to make every decision the best that we can, Lord, to touch the most people, to provide the best benefit, Lord God, and the wisest use of the money that the taxpayers pay and put into this city government. We ask all this, Lord, and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is item three, approval of city councilman that's dated 10/24/19. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments from council members. Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Spazna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor, we have two requests tonight, Jay Harner and Misty Dion. For the public record, we just ask that you give your name and address when you go up
Good evening, Council President Allison, Mayor, Mayor-elect, and council members. My name is Misty Dion. I'm the Center for Independent Living CEO. I have been attending council meetings, public works, and finance meetings for the past, well, with advocates and members of the disability community for the past year and a half to discuss architectural barriers at City Hall and our desire for a complaint access solution to which we have no avail. As you all are aware, people with disabilities, including those who use wheelchairs, do not have safe, accessible, integrated access into and throughout City Hall. You are also aware that you are in violation of the American, well, of federal laws, specifically the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Additionally, you all continue to segregate, discriminate, and lie to the citizens of Williamsport because they have disability, because we have disabilities. You should be ashamed of yourselves, every one of you. Now, some of you in the audience who are watching through the live stream might be thinking, how could the city's administration, councils, and solicitors get away with this for so long? Are they just ignorant to our civil laws? I had to wonder that myself. So I checked into it, and as a matter of fact, they have a plan to comply with these laws, albeit dated 1990 until I just recently got your plan dated September of 1919, or You were aware of it, so for 30 years you've been aware of this. You've been aware of the gross negligence, and for the last year and a half done nothing but lie and continue to treat us as criminals, forcing us to enter through a segregated rear ramp with three locked doors through the police department, forcing us to use a non-compliant, unsafe, and out-of-inspection elevator, and then held us hostage inside this building until somebody who had power, who could walk, let us out. We, the Center for Independent Living of North Central PA, members of North Central PA Adapt, and individuals with disabilities who are unable to gain safe access to the Williamsport City Hall building, are giving you one last chance, despite the fact that it is almost 30 years too late, to accept the pending bids and contract for prompt implementation and construction of the ramp and the elevator upgrades. We've retained counsel, and we are hand-delivering you tonight are your legal notice. It is time to start resolving these ADA compliance and civil rights violations. A plan is not enough. You talk about $2 million of repair costs. In the last 30 years, you haven't done any of the free compliance repairs, none that were $50 or less. Enough is enough. Approve these bids tonight and make City Hall accessible for all. What do we want? City Hall for all. When do we want it?
Good evening. My name is Jay Harner. I live at 4350 Williamsport, Pennsylvania. My experience trying to access City Hall is not very easy. I am a quadriplegic. I have no hand, finger, wrist, and minimal arm use, so I am unable to open doors on my own without assistance. When I came to City Hall on Tuesday to meet with Janice, the outside button to access the door was not working. Thankfully Karen was with me to open the door. As we went into the first door that needed to be opened by a police officer, he, there was somebody there to let us in. After meeting with Janice for about an hour, we left the lead, Karen had to physically pound on the metal door downstairs to get somebody's attention to open the door for us because the administrative news office was not, it was unoccupied. She literally pounded on the door for, I'd say, five minutes. If she was not there with me, that is something I physically cannot do. I cannot hit the door hard enough to probably get somebody's attention unless they are walking by. If I would have some type of medical issue that I'm trying to leave this building for emergency case, I don't know what I would do if I was a woman. God forbid something did happen to me physically because of that lack of accessibility that is on your heads. Will your insurance company take care of that, provide medical aid when you leave that because of your lack of accessibility? These are things you should think about in accepting those bids tonight. Thank you.
(Inhales) I know, and we have other members that would like to share their personal experience of any of this, whatever rights issue.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
There's other members who would like to share their concerns. Would you be willing to let them speak or, I mean, I'm sure, you may be sure.
How many?
Just a few. We don't have that many people here. Maurice, you want it? Maurice, deaf, she'd be running with a gift, sign language and church.
I'm deaf, and I walked in this building and I noticed there was no light accessible. If it was a fire, what would happen to me? I would freak out. This building has nothing to show, no light flashes or anything. Also, you guys have semen, and there's people, other people can be watching it, there's no interpreter for other deaf people to understand, and there is a lot of deaf people in Williamsport. My family were officers many, many years ago, the deaf and learning families, and I think in the past 40, 50 years, I'm sure my family would like to see this place accessible better for the deaf, handicapped people, all of us. So I'm just sharing, and just tonight I had no interpreter. I use cards, and I'm just doing our best. I'm sure Misty will probably explain me more tomorrow about the meeting and everything to help you to understand what happened today and everything. But I just want to share, you know, to make us feel human and comfortable to come to the meeting, to be able to understand what's going on, because I can't hear, but I can talk, but most deaf people can't. Just keep in mind, we are human, and we are feeling here, and we want to participate and be included in everything that goes through here in the meeting. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Misty, could you see that we get the names and addresses of everyone?
(Inhales) Yeah. CART is, just to explain, Maurice said that she uses CART first because there was no interpreter. CART is a service where there's an interpreter who listens to everything that's going on, and they type, and then on a laptop, on a cabinet, on a screen, she would be able to participate in the meeting. And like she said, CART services were used or who had somebody up there captioning it. People who are live streaming and watching this at home could participate also. Just wanted to explain what CART was.
Okay.
My name is Jerry Webb. I live at 820 High Street in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. I served in the military, and I went in voluntarily in 1968. I volunteered to serve my country freely for the rights of all people, the rights that you have here for my brothers and sisters in armed forces that's disabled and have given their lives for this country, for the freedom and the right for everybody to have the same opportunity. And we sit here now and we can't come together on the thing. I heard a prayer saying, we want things done for the best for all the people. But I see, and what I, in my opinion, that city council is not doing what it's supposed to be doing. These are things that we fought for. We have individuals that have given their lives for the very same thing. They had lost their limbs, they're in wheelchairs, they're disabled or whatever case may be. And we're saying, well, we're going to lock you out of the thing, so you talk about giving your opinion, but you're going to lock us out so we can't get in and give our opinion. I look at it this way, in my opinion, we see it happen all the day, we see it all around, but we say, it don't affect me, so it really don't matter. Well, it does, because our servicemen and women are fighting this very day in different places. It may not be in the United States, so that we can have the freedoms that we have now. And you know what? I don't appreciate when someone says to me, I'm not going to do anything for you, but thank you for your service, you know, and that's what I'm hearing. Thank you for your service, but nothing has been done about it, nothing in making things accessible, nothing allows us to pursue what we fought for, whatever. They say life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. How can I be happy if I don't have access to someplace that I need to take my family with for disability? What about the family servicemen that have given their lives and what the effect it has on their family? You know, we have a lot of them that's out here today, and we look at them, and I, in my opinion, I think we just look at them and take it for granted and say, oh, those folks. Well, servicemen like myself, and I have a disability that you can't see, but we fought for those rights. And now we are here today to say that we need some action and not just words, not a thank you for your service, and then nothing is done about it, and then like brushes in the corner or in the back or say, well, you know what, I'll pass by them and, yeah, thank you for your service, but I ain't doing nothing for you. To me, it's very hurtful, and I have plenty of comrades that I've seen die in my hands in combat zones in Vietnam, that's where I served. I'm here, but they are not, and they fought for the very same thing that I fought for and the other servicemen and women, even our reserves and other forces that's not in battle right now. They're standing by for the very same reason that we served and we gave our lives, we lost limbs or whatever for, the freedom for everybody, not just some. If I can't get someplace that I need to take my family because they don't have access, then to me, what I fought for is in vain. And we say that we have this for all Americans. We want the same rights and same opportunities. Well, do something about it. Don't say to me, thank you for your service, and then don't do anything about it.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, other members of the administration. I'm here tonight. My name is Karen Coke. I'm employed at the Center for Independent Living here in Williamsport at 24 East Third Street, along with some of the other folks who have just spoke. I also have been involved for the past 18 months in coming in, working with members of the council, members of public works, members of the administration, to discuss a plan, a plan of action to make City Hall safe, to make City Hall accessible. During those 18 months, I've heard talk of inclusion, transparency, serving the people. I remind you again, 30 years of ignoring civil rights. It is not acceptable. I was very, Councilman Slaughter, I congratulate you on your nomination, and I remember in March when you attended our wheelchair basketball event in Lake Homing College, had a brief conversation with you, and I'm thinking, you know what, maybe he would do a good job as mayor. Was glad to see that you attended, you appeared interested. Yet I ask you, in your entire ad campaign, in your social media, in your commercials, was there one person reflected there that may have had a disability? The disability community does not feel that they are anywhere on your radar. We talk about whose fault it is. It's Mayor Campana's fault. No, it's the council's fault. It has been 30 years of federal law that has been ignored. If codes officer Girardi comes to my house and tells me that I'm in violation of codes, I need to put a roof on or I need to replace the sidewalk in front of my home, and I say, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Girardi, I don't have the money for it, I don't have the resources to do it. Is that going to sail with this administration? Absolutely not. So you talk about being responsible with taxpayers. Councilwoman Mealy, are you okay? You're staring down there, I didn't know if you're having an episode of low blood sugar or something. Okay, just wanted to make sure that I had your attention. I talked to you about 30 years of ignoring the ADA, finger pointing, it is time to stop. And when you speak of spending taxpayer dollars wisely, what's going to be wiser, making City Hall accessible for everybody or paying incredible fines to the federal government? Hundreds of thousands of dollars is not uncommon, in addition, being required to still make the building accessible. So when you talk about being frugal with other people's money, I suggest you think about the big picture, because 30 years, the big picture's over. It's time to start picking up the broken pieces now.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to item five then. Presentation to Chief Todd Heckman for the firefighter valor award.
Good evening, President Allison, members of city council, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kathy Snoffler. I am a life member of the Willing Hand Host Company, number one, Your Neighbor in Montourville. I'm also an active member of the Central District Volunteer Firemen's Association, and I am currently the 2019 president of the Firemen's Association State of Pennsylvania. This past spring, I nominated four people from Lake Homing County for valor awards from both Central District Volunteer Firemen's Association and the Firemen's Association State of Pennsylvania. Three gentlemen, two from Nipponos Valley Oval Area, and one from Cogan Station, were awarded civilian valor awards from both organizations. One gentleman was awarded the firefighter valor award, also from both organizations. As most of you are aware, Chief Todd Heckman was off duty on March 31st, 2019, when he saw smoke about a block away from his residence. He responded and subsequently rescued a woman from the second floor of her burning home. I'd also like to take a minute here before I go on to thank Deputy Chief Dave Dimick, who assisted me in making this valor award nomination. Chief Heckman was unable to attend either of the conventions where the awards were presented, so I received them for him in his absence. Chief Todd Heckman, on behalf of the Central District Volunteer Firemen's Association, it is my honor and pleasure to present you with their certificate of firefighter valor award. It is also with great pride and honor, since I am currently president, to present Ladies and gentlemen, it is a very deserving and high honor firefighter valor awards to be received by our chief Heckman. Thank you for allowing me to attend your meeting, to make these award presentations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for, thank you for doing this tonight. We greatly appreciate it, and we're very proud of our chief, and you've just confirmed that to all of us.
President Allison, if I may just have one word quick or one phrase, we'll say, again, everybody, this was a team effort. Again, I was the one that went in the wind to grab her, but still it's worth saying, Mr. Parker and Mr. Anthony, civilians at large, were a big help in getting me on the roof, along with Officer Shone and McGee. Again, it was a team effort, it wasn't a single effort. If anyone, I think we all deserve a round of applause for everybody that was there, if that's why that woman is still walking on this earth nowadays. Thank you.
We're going to move then to item nine, the resolution authorizing the city to award contracts for City Hall elevator. And would you read that, Mrs. Frank? It's on the table, so we'll be...
Resolution authorizing the city of Williamsport to award contracts for the City Hall elevator and ADA access ramp.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. We should vote on the motion to, okay. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mrs. Spazna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Mr. Cooley.
Good evening, President Council, members of council, administration. Before you, you have a resolution to award contracts for the elevator remodeling and the ramp construction at City Hall in the amount of $779,620. This would be the base bid and add alternate one.
Okay.
And this was reviewed by finance a month ago, I believe.
Initially, yes, it was. Thank you, Mr. Cooley. I'm going to turn the item over to Councilwoman Mealy as chair of the finance committee, who did review this.
Finance did review this item a month ago, and obviously, in the interim time, we've had some, we've had several discussions, both about the city's plan moving forward, both in terms of accessibility and in terms of, in terms of whether or not we intend to stay in this, in this facility or possibly seek quarters elsewhere. You know, a lot of our discussion on this item has centered around the whole idea of, are we staying in this structure? Is it wiser for us to attempt to move elsewhere and to utilize these funds to make the structure, the current structure accessible if we're planning to go elsewhere and we might need to spend the same funds to create accessibility elsewhere? And so that's always been the crux of the discussion. We have realized in the intervening 30, 45 days, excuse me, that the decision to move from City Hall will not be something, obviously, that we can arrive at in the 60 days before these bids expire. We have, we have spent quite a bit of time discussing the issue and looking at the entirety of the issue, and most recently, I can relate to the other members of council, I guess sort of my thoughts after a discussion that I sort of interrogated a couple of members of the administration yesterday, just trying to sort of figure out what, what are, what I might think that our wisest course of action was here moving forward, and I can tell you what I discovered and then open it up for a discussion, simply as a point of sort of jumping off. We had heard from discussions with our solicitor that we are continuing to examine that we had created a plan for creating accessibility within City Hall in 1990, acted on that plan, and consequently meet those standards. We are continuing to evaluate whether or not we filed those forms properly, et cetera, et cetera, and making certain that we crossed all of our i's and dotted all of our t's 30 years ago when none of us was here. But that said, we are looking at some modifications to City Hall. We do have an elevator that is in the process of being certified, but we're not certain whether or not it will, it will pass those certifications. We do have, and you know, we do have, obviously, as we've heard this evening, some accessibility issues that are not driven even necessarily by architectural things within City Hall, so much as by perhaps a... so much as by perhaps a lack of oversight on our part or overlooking things like a call button on the door that doesn't work. It doesn't work, items like that. We have some issues that we need to address, that we can address, that are not specifically dictated by this... By these bids. And I would highly recommend that we move to address those, especially the ones that frankly aren't costing as much of anything and are things that we need to deal with. That said, in discussions about the ADA access ramp and the elevator, the cost of the elevator renovations and, I think, incidentally, new doors for the front of City Hall comes to about $312,000, about $312,050. And it would be...
$312,770.
$312... Did I do the math wrong?
Huh?
Anyway. But it... The cost of both contracts is around $778,000. And our initial discussions had revolved around the fact that that is... Even that, without completing all of the work that we've foreseen in the bid, the two add alternates is more than we have to spend on the project, more than we have set aside for it. And my suggestion, especially because there still seems to be some discussion about whether or not that access ramp is going to provide the best quality access to the building and/or provide the best... Provide the sort of the best way that we can address it would be to accept the City Hall elevator bids, do the work on the elevator, make the elevator accessible, move forward with other minor modifications to City Hall that we know that we can do and things that we can fix that will simply make access easier. Reject, for this current time, the ADA access ramp bids, and then continue to look at those as part of a larger plan, as we've all discussed, to... As to whether, A, we stay in City Hall, B, whether that is our wisest... Whether that method of access is our wisest course of action. We're looking, as we all know, at two separate issues here. And those issues are both what we are required to do and then what we have a moral imperative to do. And... Or a moral, you know, what... An obligation to do. We know that we want to be as accessible as we can to all members of the public. But we also know that we need to do that in such a way that we can continue to maintain that accessibility and continue to be responsive to the public whether or not we stay in this building. And so I think that we need to personally... This is my opinion, but that's kind of why I'm opening it up to everyone. I believe that we have the money in place to complete the elevator upgrades. We move forward with those. And then we establish, as soon as possible, an ad hoc committee to look at relocation, whether we're looking at relocation or rehabilitation of City Hall, decide which one we're pursuing, figure out the budget for it, and make better handicapped accessibility upgrades to the facility a priority if we're looking at staying here or when we look at moving. Make certain that where we move is accessible. But that was the meat of my conversation. Mr. Cooley, you can verify for me that the elevator has been inspected, but we haven't received a certificate one way or the other yet?
That is correct.
Okay. And so part of my understanding was that if we complete the elevator work currently, currently on the table and under bid, then we can potentially avoid further elevator work if the certification were not to come through. Correct?
That is correct.
Which is to say that we have the potential to save ourselves some money. It's hard to say which way it would go. But we have the potential to save ourselves some money by moving forward with work on the elevator. And one way or the other, we make the elevator safer and easier to use for everyone who's accessing City Hall. That is the totality of my observations, as I recollect them so far. I wouldn't open it up to comments from other members of Council.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. We've had several discussions on this issue. Mr. Henderson?
I was just gonna ask, could you tell us about the... It's been a little while. Can you tell us about the elevator upgrades, what that would entail? I seem to recall something about larger doors. Is that correct?
According to the architects and engineers, the doors are actually the correct size.
Okay.
The doors would be replaced. Basically, the cab would be rebuilt and new machinery would be installed. But they would keep the existing base of the cab and build everything else around that.
And the cab would be bigger than it is now, or it just would...
I think it might be ever so slightly bigger, just because of the way they build it now. But they're not actually changing the shaft size in any way. So it's not gonna change significantly. It is a compliant size currently.
Okay. Okay. And of course, you had mentioned before, we're just not sure if it's certified yet. However, we are aware that there are some issues with it in our experience.
Yes, we have not received the certificate. It's my understanding that the door action is no longer adjustable. Are there other that you're aware of? I know they did some stuff when they were working on it, when they did the inspection that day. But again, we have not received the report back yet.
And this is the base bid, which is the elevator upgrades and including the... And then also the front doors. Could you talk about the front doors aspect of that base bid?
It would just... It would simply be replacing the front doors, which are in very bad shape currently. The steel is rotting away at the bottom, and they desperately need replaced. That was one of the... From what I recall, being behind the camera, when the original money was borrowed and set aside for City Hall, the doors were one of the driving factors behind that.
And that would be primarily a security issue?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the doors would not... There'd be no access control on the doors. The hardware will be put in place so that that could be added in the future, but we are not actually adding the access control itself. That would be the third add alternate if we went for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Katz?
When we talk about the doors, and I think I want to ask Mrs. Fosna, when John Markley was here, and there was a bid put in place for the doors, if I remember correctly. And wasn't there a discussion that the doors had to be... They had to be with the structure of the building because this is a historic building? And so therefore, the doors that were proposed, from what I remember... I was sitting on the benches out there when this discussion was going on. And from what I remember of that discussion, that it was put on hold because it had to coincide with the historic building. Do we have any... Do we have to do that now also?
The state museum board did review the renderings, and they approved the renderings. My understanding is that we actually no longer have an agreement with the state museum board, that they have to approve what we do to the structure. So the doors are... I mean, out of courtesy, they reviewed... We had them review it, and they are fine with it.
Because I know that was on... The money was aside for back then. And that's over eight years ago. So therefore, you know, that money was never spent on those doors. It should have been spent then.
Right.
Okay.
Mrs. Fosna?
Mr. Cooley, tell me, please, again, how much will it cost for us to do that elevator, the way you would describe being done? What's the final cost of that, from what you've been told?
The elevator is $312,770. Right. And that is the base bid.
And what does that mean, it's the base bid?
So when you bid something, you bid the base, what you absolutely want to do, and then you can add add alternates to it. So the ramp was an add alternate, and the security was an add alternate. But we can't award the ramp without awarding the base bid.
So the first bid that you have to award is the $312,000?
Right. And that includes three separate contracts. It would be a general contractor, an electrical contractor, and the elevator contractor.
I think the public needs to know that, that that's the one. That... And separately, then, the second bid with the ramp. And what was the... What's the estimated cost of the ramp?
Just the ramp or including the base bid?
Just the ramp.
$466.
$466,850.
$466,850. And that brings us to the $778,000, or are...
That brings us to $779,620.
$779,620. The ramp, at this point in time and place, because... And I've not been here for the whole discussion, unfortunately, as it has occurred in the last year or so. The ramp itself is too steep for people to come up that ramp in a wheelchair? Is that the problem? Mr. Girardi shaking his head, no.
No, it's not the ramp. It's access from the public sidewalk to that ramp. It's the access from the parking stall to the ramp. You have the right slope and ramp out back. It's right with the sofa. When you get down the grade, you go downhill. You need to have ramp, going down, you need to have sidewalk. For the general public, to come off the sidewalk into your building. That's the issue.
And that needs to happen out front, not out back?
The reason why you can't go out back is because of the safety issues that were put in place by the police department. Makes it harder for handicapped individuals to come through that way.
Unless someone brings them through it?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe the other issue with out back is that now you're sort of segregating people and saying that they have to enter through the rear instead of the front, like everyone else can.
My question is, we've talked at different meetings about moving, about whether we're gonna stay here or we're not gonna stay here. It seems to me we need to make that decision ASAP. We need to decide, are we staying or are we not staying? There are facilities within this community where we could move tomorrow night and have a meeting, have a council meeting, and then everyone would be able to come to that council meeting. Is that correct? Excuse me. I don't think you're allowed to speak like that to us when we're having a council meeting. I think we're not allowed to do that. I'm not allowed to interrupt you when you're talking and... Okay? So let's be polite to one another. Thank you. I don't... I think that would occur. It seems to me, in the budget right now, in this year's budget, have we budgeted $779,620 for the ramp and the elevator? Yes, Ms.?
I mean, my understanding is that we can approach that total if we look at a set aside that we have for emergencies within the City Hall operating budget, as well as the $325,000 remaining in the borrowing line that we had authorized a handful of years ago for City Hall renovations. So in other words, we have that $312,770 falls within the borrowing that we have in place. The remaining funds would largely come out of the City Hall operating fund, where they've been set aside, but then leave us with kind of nothing for other emergency repairs that might, you know, the roof falls in or something.
Correct.
But I'm not... I cannot quite recall any longer. It seems to me that we don't quite get there even then, but it's a relatively small set aside from the general fund. Or possibly, we do get to the $770,000.
No, I believe that...
We do.
Joe can correct me. I believe there's enough money in the City Hall fund to cover the resolution as we presented it. Joe?
Bob.
There's enough money between the borrowing and the... Okay.
I was checking preliminary numbers from the audit. I think it's around $600,000 in the City Hall operating fund. And I think we determine after seeing expenses, architectural fees, from the borrowing, so probably around $100,000 for many merger repairs, projects, whatever is deemed necessary by, you know, the decision maker.
You can't do that. They cannot keep interrupting. That's just not how we want to be.
Mr. Cooley? The ramp leads up to the front, and new doors would be put in?
Correct.
Would they be handicap accessible doors?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that base would be covered.
The door where the ramp meets the building would have an opener and...
Right.
Have a pedestal and be fully compliant.
I just want to say at this point... And it's not to assign blame to anybody. This has been quite a convoluted process from when we first began to discuss these issues last year. Way last year, we beat... No, it was before that, a couple of years ago. We were exploring possibly moving from City Hall at that point. We got numbers that said, well, if we were to do that, it was gonna be several million dollars. And if we can do City Hall... At that time, I recall, we were going to be able to do everything we needed to do here for under a million dollars. I don't remember where the figures were coming from, but I know it was in that range. Well, obviously, the prudent thing to do was go with that idea and that budget. As we progressed over time, that number began to grow. The other number began to shrink. And that's when eventually we began to look at possibly moving from City Hall, because when the numbers get close enough, it makes more sense to move to a building where you're not pouring money into it. And truthfully, we looked at some of the issues with City Hall, the roof, obviously, things like that. And the HVAC system, which we've had different numbers on what it would cost to replace that. I don't think we've gotten numbers on the things that need repaired in City Hall, things that need replaced on the project that we've ever felt confident in. And I can say for certain, I don't think we're confident at this point. Not the kind of numbers where we can say, well, that's gonna take care of it all. And I think our fear has all along been, we put a million in, we put two million in, and then we find out it's gonna be four, five million dollars. I don't think council has been convinced, because we've had different studies done that brought in different assessments. And then we haven't had a cohesive administrative group approach this. We've approached individuals and gotten their assessments. We've gotten different studies. But we've never had what we needed, which was... We've gotten different studies, but we've never had what we needed, which was a very cohesive, comprehensive look at what we felt gave us the solid numbers and, and the solid plan. So, here we are. I mean, we're looking at piecemealing, but we know there's several other things that need done. We know there's problems with the, the roof doesn't drain out into the street first. It drains down through the walls. There's interior drains in there that, nobody really has a, a good assessment of what's going on in there. So, we don't know how much it's going to cost. I, I feel safe in saying that, to really take care of everything in city hall. And as we've heard tonight, we're talking about some accessibility issues. Well, we've heard some very good points made about what we don't have that has, has never been addressed, that we're not met, meeting the needs of the hearing impaired. We're not, we don't have the safety issues covered for people that don't, that have different disabilities that they need. We heard how it can be difficult to get out of here. We don't have a plan in place to address that. It, it just, yes, yeah. It, I feel like it's been pretty much knee jerk all the way along. And I think that's what we've been struggling with all along. It's not that we don't want to do what needs to be done. It's that we're not sure everything that does need to be done. And it's never been separated out in that way. We need an ADA assessment on our facilities, which is separate from our, the things that we have in here, our infrastructure. Those things aren't always the same issues. In someplace, in some places, they do come together, but, but they don't in all of them. So, we've been struggling in the last, we've put this on the table, not to just hope it would go away. We've really been doing what we feel is our due diligence behind the scenes to try to come up with some legitimate answers, at least in our eyes, enough so that we had a self-assurance that, that we were doing what's right for everybody that's involved. And we're here tonight, and I don't feel we've closed that gap. I'm not sure. We, we need a plan to get there. These are the kinds of things that you have addressed when you, when you have a comprehensive strategic plan for your city and all of its infrastructure and all of its property and all of its buildings. We don't have that. I know there's intention and we're, we're going to move ahead, and we are going to have that in the future. But right now, we don't have that. So, if, if it seems like we're floundering a little bit, I don't know if that's quite the right word, but if we're unsure and we're, we're still asking questions, it's, it's precisely because we don't have the assurance that I feel like we need as elected officials to, to make a sound decision. We can make a decision. That, that's no problem, and, and we can do this work. But that's not to say that the deed is done and everything's taken care of, and we, we know we're going to take care of everything in this building. Yes, it's been, it's been thirty years since, since the American for Disabilities Act, and those things haven't been looked at. We're trying to cram that all in to a com, a compressed timeframe, and it doesn't work well that way. So, we need to come up with a plan. Ms. Mealy mentioned having an ad hoc committee constructed to look at these things, building viability and viability of moving. We definitely need to do those kinds of things, but tonight we have this decision. And is there an easy answer? Is there a right or wrong answer? We haven't come to that conclusion yet. Mr. Henderson?
We have this decision in front of us, and the, the bid here includes three hundred and twelve for the upgrade, this is three hundred and twelve thousand for the elevator upgrades and the front doors, and then another four hundred and sixty-six, almost four hundred and sixty-seven for the ramp. Those two projects will hardly touch all of the issues that we've heard tonight. I mean, that's, that's the fact. So that as, as desirous as we are to meet those needs, this isn't going to do it. This isn't going to do it. And, and I, you know, I applaud our friends here who are bringing attention to this. And I am not. I am not. Because this is something I was unaware of coming in when I came on council three and a half years ago. And so, this is an issue. This is a big issue, and it needs to be addressed. This, this bid is not going to address it. And we need, obviously, to do much more, much more. And so, to have a plan to address this, I think is, is lacking for us right now. And so, I, you know, honestly, I don't know. I don't know how we can, how we can do this from this meeting right now. I don't think it's possible for us. But we can certainly keep these decisions or these discussions going and, and make some decisions and move ahead. I think we have a whole study. One of the reasons that we placed this on the table was to allow our codes department to give us this study to point out all of the things that we need to be, to, that need to be addressed in this building. And there's a lot there. We didn't, we didn't know this information two weeks ago. And we should have, but we didn't. And now we do. And so, knowing all of this, I think really can, can guide us towards making some of these decisions to, to better deal with these accessibility issues. And so, the question, as I see it in front of me, is do we, do we spend down everything that we have for this, these bids that will not address most of these issues? Or do we come up with a better plan to address these accessibility issues?
Mrs. Fosner?
My understanding, and maybe you can help me with this, Mr. Girardi. My understanding is this is not the only facility that we own as a city that has ADA concerns. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, there, what would you say? Every one of our buildings has ADA concerns?
I would say yes.
Okay. So, so we need to bite off a lot of things. We, this is just, this is just the, the tip of that whole process. Would you say that?
For this, well, yes. This building is probably the largest of, of the facilities we have to renovate. The other ones won't be as costly as this one. But yes.
But, but that's an issue that's going to be, have to be part of our budgets from, for the next, how many years? So that we can become ADA compliant with all of our buildings?
That, that would be correct.
Okay. My concern is also that the police department in this building certainly has totally inadequate place for a police department where we are right now. I mean, through the years, I've seen us move around on that first floor and taken down walls and put in new walls and moved stuff all over the place and put in doors and whatever to open and not to open. And because it has not been, it hasn't been a good facility for a police department. My understanding is also that the problem is codes. It's downstairs in the basement. It's very difficult to get to codes for everyone, and it's, it's an interesting place to go to visit, if I must say, the least amount. My concern is that we need to look at the whole picture, the big picture, and I think we need to move at a pace that's much faster than what we've moved. We need to look at all facilities, and we need to get busy. We should not just be talking about it. We should be moving. We have a lot of work to do, and it needs to be done in a more rapid way. Government goes slow. Government is very slow. Maybe we need to compromise. Maybe we need to look at this resolution. We need to compromise, not do all of it, but maybe do one thing in that process and then, and then look to the future with that process. I don't know. I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas and thoughts. I think we need to be reasonable. We need to be reasonable for the taxpayers, of all taxpayers of the city of Williamsport. Everyone needs to be a part of that process, and we need to be reasonable for everyone. So, do we do, can we, can we take the resolution and not do everything in the resolution? Do we need to formulate a new resolution if we think we can do that? Can we do one part of it? Can we start with the elevator and look at that and move forward in other areas of exploration and gathering data and moving quickly? I don't know.
I think you could certainly amend the resolution and remove the add alternate, which would be the ramp. But you do have, if you're going to award any of these bids, you have to award the base bid to start with. So you have to award the elevator.
I understand. Just my thoughts.
Ms. Mealy?
It would also be my observation that even would we choose to move from city hall, elevator upgrades would probably be helpful to whoever might become a, a future tenant. So there's, there, there is that as well. I would certainly support an amendment to the resolution if that's where we want to go. I do have a couple other amendments I'd like to make if we, if we do move in that direction. But I would be open to further discussion.
Mr. Slaughter?
And the other piece to it is we're still not sure, the report from the elevator. I mean, we haven't even received that back yet, whether it's passed or failed for that report. So I think, you know, to make a fiscally responsible decision, we need all of the information. We do not have that yet. So, what Councilman Henderson was saying, you know, we don't have all of the pieces even still, even in front of us right now, to make the most fiscally responsible, accurate decision. And it still doesn't address, like you said, all of the concerns that we have, all of the ADA structural infrastructure, whether we stay. And is it, is it a responsible decision to put three hundred and twelve dollars and then potentially move in a month or a few months to another building that where we would not need to put that in? I mean, there's a lot of variables in place still that we don't have in front of us right now to make the most accurate decision.
Ms. Mealy?
Mr. Winter, am I, am I correct in my understanding that if for some reason we do, the elevator does fail certification, it's possible that it would cost us more money than what we currently have quoted to, to deal with that issue?
I'm sorry. Can you start from the beginning?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm talk, I'm talking to my paper the whole dan, the whole night anyway. I said, am, am I correct in my understanding that if, if the elevator, if we fail to receive a certification for the elevator, it's possible that we would be obligated to make more changes to the elevator than what's contemplated in this bid? However, if we finish, if we finish this work, then the certification, then, then we, then we wouldn't have an obligation to, to do that additional work. So I guess my point is--
That's correct.
Potentially by spending this money on the elevator shaft now, we, if, we, we don't know about certification one way or the other. But not knowing. If we fail, it could cost us more money than simply going, moving forward now.
My understanding is if it fails, and again, I'm not a architect or an engineer, if it fails, then we would be required to bring the, the entire shaft up to current standards. So it could be significantly more expensive.
Because we could need--
Whereas the shaft right now is structurally sound, from what we understand, so we can move forward with just the upgrades while we're still acting sort of under the certificate, the current certificate.
So, if, I, I, I guess, given, given that, it would be my suggestion that we move at least on the, on the elevator item, knowing that, you know, we, we don't know one way or the other, but it could cost us a bunch more money if we don't.
But if the reports come back that we have to do that, and it's going to cost us more money, and we've already started something, it could cost us more money in the long run because of that.
No, we're currently certified. So if we move forward with the repairs, then we--
But we're still waiting for a report. But if that report comes back--
The report, though, is mainly about the current machinery and cab. The, the elevator company has been through the place and has reviewed the shaft. The engineers have reviewed the shaft, and I believe that they're comfortable with the current state of the shaft itself. But we could fail because of the doors don't have any more adjustment left in them, or if the governor can't be adjusted any farther. Those are things that could be failed, and those are pieces that would be replaced as part of the upgrade.
So we would have addressed the, the issue, and we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't fail, I guess, is the point then, because we would have addressed--
Right. My understanding is if, if the report comes back negative, and we are actively in this process of being out to bid and/or have awarded the contract, then we can sort of continue to operate unless there's some gross issue with, with the elevator.
But see, that's it. We don't know.
I, I-- It's in, yeah, it's in labor and industry's hands. My guess would be if there, if the inspector had a, some sort of issue that was of gross nature, they probably would have closed the elevator on, on June 31st.
Is there not someone you can get in touch with? I mean, we've been waiting for this report for how long?
It's like we keep talking about. It's the wheels of government. They move extremely slow. They schedule their own time to come inspect it. They do their own inspection. The inspection is a full weight test where they take the elevator early to the fourth floor, basically let it drop and hit the brakes to make sure it stops. I've tried reaching out to labor and industry. You don't know who the individual is that meets the elevator inspector here to actually inspect it. So you're just trying to chase something that you have no idea who to chase.
Do we know that it was inspected?
It was inspected because we paid for the inspection.
I was here the day they inspected it because I took them to the fourth floor.
Right.
I just find it bizarre that nobody gets information back on something that's supposed to be important.
They do inspections on the elevators at Bowman Field every year, and I don't receive a certificate till the end of the season. The inspection's done in the spring before the season even starts. I don't receive the, the certificate till like November, December. Unfortunately, it's just, like you guys all said, the wheels of government moves slow. The only thing I can say, if there was something catastrophic wrong with the elevator, they would have shut us down that day.
It's an assumption with government, though?
Right.
We know what assumption is.
So no news is good news. Potentially.
Just by way of clarification, the report we're waiting for from labor and industry is not on the condition of the elevator. It's--
It is a, every five years, you have to have an inspection done by L and I for the elevator. It gets an annual inspection by Otis Elevator--
Right.
--who is currently, we have under contract. But every five years, you have to have the labor and industry inspection done, which is the weight test, the brake system. It's the full-scale test. That's what we're currently waiting for, to say that our elevator can operate for the next five years.
So the, the two aren't, they might, they're not mutually exclusive, the two inspections? They--
They jointly do the five-year inspection, but annually, Otis Elevator does the inspection.
Okay. So, but if we, if we waited till L and I gave their report, then that triggered something that could make it more expensive?
Yes. If L and I determines that they are not going to give us a five-year certificate-- Yes, if LNI determines that they are not going to give us a five-year certificate, that they're going to shut the elevator down and we are not out for bid, or we are not in the process because we're extended to our point of, as long as we can have the bids out, then the moment we do nothing tonight and the elevator is deemed to be unsafe, we then have to reconstruct the entire elevator, basically.
Yeah.
We, we have to meet a new set of standards.
Correct. You would have to come up to the current standards-
Whereas, right now, we're within-
Right, yeah, yeah.
Which would in turn be a lot of work in the elevator shaft, uh, making sure that it meets all fire regulations and everything else and new, an entire new car, um, an entire new system.
Have we ever had this kind of, th- this inspection was done months ago, have we ever had this kind of lapse between the inspection and the report?
Well, I wasn't in this position five years ago when the inspection happened, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, as far as the annual inspection from Otis, it's usually about two, three months till I actually get the report from them.
That answered that question.
Mr. Henderson.
It seems reasonable, uh, to move ahead, in my opinion, with that base bid and take care of the elevator. But I, I would not be comfortable with moving ahead with the ad alternate portion of this So, uh, I would make an amendment, or I would, I would propose an amendment, um, to remove that, um, ad alternate one from this resolution. And then that would change the total amount to 312,770. Am I getting that correct?
312,770 would be the three base bid contracts, yes.
That would be my motion.
I would second that.
Motion second, is there a discussion on that amendment? Does everybody understand what we're doing?
My, my comment would be that is a compromise.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's important from time to time to compromise, but I would also say that we need to move in expedient way to make a decision whether we stay or we leave because we, I don't think we should put any more money in this pit. I think there, they, that it, we are ridiculous to do that. We have lots of needs in lots of places and this building does not fit those needs.
Could I say one thing? Just to get it fully out there, if we modify this and only accept the base bid and then decide to stay here and we decide to go forward with a ramp, there would be somewhat of a significant cost in re-preparing documents and going through the bidding process again, just so you know that. I mean, the, the drawings are done, but the drawings include all three, the base and the two ad alternates, so we would have to modify the drawings, modify the construction documents and have a new bid package put together.
Could you give us a ballpark figure on that?
I would, I believe we spent close to 150,000 getting to this point.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 150,000 was spent to prepare the plan that is now being, just wanted to make sure I had that correct. Thank you. $150,000 to the taxpayer.
Now, mind you, we, the drawings are done, the engineering is done, we would just have to prepare new documents.
Mm-hmm.
And go through the bidding process again.
So, it wouldn't be that, okay, I'm, the, the drawings, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
We, the, the drawings and the bid documents would have to be modified because we'd obviously have to remove the elevator portions from them, um, decide what the new base bid is, and we'd have to re-advertise, go through the whole bidding process again.
So, it, we spent 150 to get here, but-
That's my understanding.
Wouldn't necessarily be that.
No, I don't, no. Maybe, maybe 50.
50,000, digital. After the cost of the-
I think it's important we have all the information. So, we have a motion and a second to amend, is there any more discussion on that? To go with the base bid only? Mr. Henderson.
Um, just to clear up again, the, the finances of this, um, we have, um, some borrowed money. How much is that borrowed that would be for this?
It's 325,000.
325?
Yes.
Uh, and then, so if we were to go over that, uh, then we would be using the-
City Hall contingency.
City Hall contingency, which we have been saving to address the roof issue, if I'm not mistaken.
The roof and, and other city-
And other-
Facility issues.
I think it's shocking anyway, anyway you look at it, and, and it is a part of government for better or for worse, um, that, uh, that said, we, we, we know there's a cost to, to prepare bids. We also know that, uh, that the other thing that I wanted to address in this resolution one way or the other is that the, the city doesn't currently have a contract with a construction management firm of its own, correct?
That's my understanding.
Right. Um, and I think part of us coming to a better understanding of the cost to prepare bids is having that in place and a better understanding of the cost to administer, to oversee the, the upgrades to an elevator or the up, or the upgrades to an elevator and the construction of a, of a handicap ramp. We have been flying blind in this process so far because we've been utilizing the services of someone with whom we're not officially contracted and consequently our knowledge of the expenditures has come after the fact. And, uh, that said, um, however, we move on this resolution, if we do, I would suggest that we insert language into it. I, I will make that motion next, that we insert language into, into it that says that, that we don't move forward, that, that construction does not move forward until we have issued an RFP for a construction management, um, firm to serve the city. And we have, and we have chosen a construction management firm and with whom we have a contract to oversee this, this work in City Hall. And, uh, and also, it would seem like it would probably be a good thing if you guys had a look at it before the whole thing was said and done, right? Since you've overseen most of it so far. But, um, but, uh, anyway, um, but I, that, that's another real issue that we've been dealing with as part of this whole process. And I think if we don't have, um, if we don't have a plan, if we don't have a strategic plan, if we don't have, um, contracts in place and arrangements in place that allow us to codify before we spend the money what we're spending, then we're spending money that we don't realize we're spending until, until it's gone. And, uh, and that is not an acceptable way to do business. Um, and, uh, and so that, that too is something I think we need to fix before we move forward, forward with this project one way or the other. Uh, that said, um, I am happy to support Joel's motion to amend the bid. Um, you know, I am, I believe, the only member of, of council currently who thinks that we, it may well be most economically feasible for us to remain in the structure. So, uh, with that in mind, I, I would potentially support both bids, but I, but I, I understand needing to understand all of our needs and how we will accommodate them before we move, before we make major renovations to this structure. So, um, what, what pleases council pleases me. And-
Um, is it reasonable to think that we could find in the future grant funding to help with our ADA compliance? And, uh, if that is the case, then, uh, then perhaps it would be best for us to hold off and continue with this amendment so that we can pursue grant funding that would help us with these, these costs. But I don't know if that's a, has that been explored from the administration?
Uh, not specifically, I defer to, uh, Ms. Young as to whether we-
Do you see the G hours for, maybe have acceptable improvements? You have done that in the past?
Mm-hmm.
Health and Human Services federally, HHS does have somebody, there's a lot of tax credits available for private companies, uh, but there, there are potentially, you know, funds through HHS, obviously the tax credit portion wouldn't apply here. The other thing is, as I mentioned, Mr. Gerardi-
Yes.
-if you need the elevator certificate expedited, I'd be happy to reach out to Secretary Alexiak and, and ask for that. We've done that for, for our private clients and particularly if it was something that needed to be done in order of a decision, uh, they, they will order that in. Please, Council, I'll make that call this afternoon tomorrow and ask for it to be expedited. I mean, the obligation for, the obligation, not for-
Right, okay.
We get that to me, I'll-
Adam can get it to you.
I'll make the call to you.
So, that, the point is that this decision would be a whole lot easier, would it not? If we had, uh, if we, if we had that potential and had looked into that and, and we knew more?
I guess, the point I want to make is when this project was moving forward earlier this year, Stephanie did put in her 2019, um, action plan, $100,000 to help with upgrades to the fire alarm system and different things to meet ADA compliance. So, there was some outside funding coming in to move forward with the building.
Okay. But that's not included in this, these bids here, that's something different.
No, no, this was-
Right.
This was all based off of what the administration was under the understanding that we had funding for.
Right.
Um, Stephanie's stuff was an added bonus, we're going to call it, um, that Stephanie and I had gotten together. Fire alarm panel has already been upgraded, so the next thing on the list was to start going through and making all pool stations ADA compliant, um-
Yeah.
You know, putting in the flash, the strobes, um-
Right.
Doing different things to meet the compliance moving forward and our goal was each year for CDBG to allocate funds to keep the movement going. But it's, um, kind of a moot point if we don't have a ramp or an elevator to get these folks into the building.
Right. Uh, I think it's relevant to the discussion of, of amending this, uh, this resolution because if we can pursue grant funding for a ramp, uh, then, then there, then this door is not closed. Uh, and, and I feel that, uh, that that makes it perhaps a little easier to make a decision like this for us. Um, and, and I think that's a viable option in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment? If not, on the amendment, please, Mrs. Frank.
Mrs. Fosna. No. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz. No. Mr. Slaughter.
No.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Okay, 3-3, amendment fails.
The reason I said no was, I, you opened more doors to be able to do all of it. So, why wouldn't we wait and see what the doors are as far as grants and the ability to use, uh, other monies to be able to do all three, which makes sense to me.
Some, some, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first we're hearing of grants, so in defense of the administration, um, I was not aware of grants. I'm not a grant writer, I don't, you know.
It would be, the other, it's probably about a year before you'd be able to get any grant funding. If we were tasked with this at an earlier time, I would be looking at that, but, you know, tasked with, tasked with.
So, we need to have a plan.
If there were a plan, I mean, there was, I mean, frankly, there was a $2 million R cap for a pajama factory that they pursued for this building, but it is not something given to us. Except, I can pursue what I'm asked to pursue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Mealy.
Um, regardless of how we move on this resolution, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend it, to include language regarding a construction management firm, um, before we make any further votes. That language would be, um, that demolition and replacement of, uh, shall not begin until the city awards a contract to a construction management firm, for, for construction management services for this project and presumably other city projects. Shall the city not award a contract by April 17th, 2020, the project can move forward regardless. Representatives of the city administration shall have a weekly, shall have weekly inspections of the project and have the final say over moving forward. Mr. Lubin, does that sound like it's?
You're making an amendment to-
The resolution.
Yeah, but the original resolution, the only thing left is, there's nothing left of it because the base bid has been turned, the amendment was just, unless you're going to go back to the original resolution.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're currently considering the original resolution and whether or not to vote on it. I'm asking to amend that orig, that original resolution to say that we, should we choose to move forward with the entire resolution, which may or may not happen from, you know, I don't, I don't really have a sense, um, but should we choose to, then we need to have a construction management firm in place as contracted with the city of Williamsport in order for the project to commence. And that city, and that our city, um, administrative officials need to oversee the project as well and inspect it weekly to make certain that it's moving forward. I, I feel as though we've had some gaps within this project, um, up to now, and I want to make certain that we cover those bases before we move forward with anything. Um, so, under, understanding that the, that the whole document may fail or pass, I want that in place to protect us should we, should we move forward with, with this work. Uh, that's my amendment, was that clear enough?
So, um-
Do I have a second?
Do we have that in language? Okay.
I'll second that.
There's a, a motion and a second, discussion on the amendment to, uh, ensure a construction management firm, uh, RFP is sent out and accomplished.
I think that's very reasonable.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Frank on that amendment, please.
Mrs. Fosna. Yes. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz. Yes. Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, motion passes. Okay, now we're back to the resolution itself. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Campana.
Yes, I'm not going to condemn anybody, but I have to just make a couple brief, brief comments, if I may. Thank you. All I want to say is I think we should all try to put ourselves in the shoes of these disabled individuals. By the grace of God, we don't have these issues that they do. I think we have to take a look at, number one. And then the other thing I'd like to say is in regards to the, the changes in the resolution that was proposed- that was proposed that failed, we got to remember this. We talked about an elevator, but if you can't get in a building and if it's not accessible, how is the elevator useful? Thank you.
Well, we're left with the entire bid. For me, the question hinges on, I think it's important to cover the elevator, given what we've heard. Other comments or questions from...
Norm, I assume that we can't re-propose the amendment just in case anyone wants to reconsider, correct?
So, anyone who votes no, they would have the... They would have the...
Okay. If anyone who votes no then wants to rethink the amendment, it's an option, but otherwise we're voting on the entire bid package.
Just to clarify, it's not the entire bid package. It's just the base and the adult number one.
The base and the adult number one, thank you.
Right.
Sorry, Chris. We're voting on the entire resolution.
Yeah. Good point. With the amendment for the construction management firm in there. Okay, let's not belabor this any further. On the resolution, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Schlotter?
No.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you all. I need to leave early.
So...
We're criminals. That's our freedom.
Thank you. Thank you. Order, please.
No, you all should be ashamed of yourselves.
Order, please.
You're spending more money.
Order, please.
You're doing exactly the right thing, and you all know it. Waste your money.
Order, please.
You're wasting half the dollars here. We're all...
Order, please.
You all should be ashamed of yourselves. I know nothing happens to you or your family ever, and you don't have to experience this stuff, and you're putting other people through it. This is shameful. Shameful. Shame on all of you. Shame on all of you. Don't worry, you let ourselves out. I see for you all, they opened up the doors open for you.
Order, please.
Shame on all of you. Shame on all of you. Pinnacle. And people with disabilities pay taxes too, and they still can't...
Order, please. Order, please.
Shameful. Absolutely ridiculous. Three years. Absolutely ridiculous. Hopefully, we'll get down the elevator, and if it crashes...
Could somebody close the doors, please?
Not yet.
We still have some business to do tonight. I believe we'll move back up, or we'll just move on to item six. Ordinance for the 46-year CDB budget. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
An ordinance 46-year 2020 community development budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Thank you. And...
Good evening.
Thank you.
This is the budget for the city's 2020 community development block grant and home funds. These are the funds that we received from HUD, and we're basing our 2020 allocation on the actual amount of funds that were awarded in 2019. So we're estimating that we'll receive $1,4,158 in community development block grant funds, $230,214 in home program funds, and $115,000 in home program income. Our proposed expenditures under public facilities and improvements include $300,000 for street reconstruction, $75,000 for removal of architectural barriers and the reconstruction of curb ramps, $125,000 for Lowe's Park improvements, and $125,000 for Young's Wood Parks improvements. This work may include new lighting, a pavilion landscaping, and possible playground upgrades. And we intend to apply to DCNR for a grant to match those funds in the amount of $250,000. We're proposing to fund the American Rescue Workers in the amount of $15,236 to fund security improvements to the Saving Grace Homeless Shelter, and $51,047 in public facilities program delivery. For public services, which is funded with CDBG, we're proposing to fund the Lycoming County SPCA in the amount of $8,500. This is to continue its voucher program toward a neuter or spay for the pets of low-income residents and to provide microchips for pet identification. And the SPCA is also adding a trap neuter return component to their program. The SPCA will offer vouchers for individuals to trap cats and to have the cats spayed or neutered and returned to the neighborhood or rehomed. We're proposing to fund fire tree place in the amount of $8,000 to offset the wages of four full-time trained counselors who will work with the youth and fire trees after school program. And we're funding public services program delivery in the amount of $3,240. For housing rehabilitation and preservation, we're funding the owner-occupied single-family housing rehab activity with $25,000 of CDBG dollars and $130,358 of home dollars. This program helps income-eligible homeowners make needed repairs to their homes. We're funding handicapped accessibility rehab in the amount of $15,000. The handicapped accessibility program offers accessibility improvements to residential properties occupied by low-income persons. A total of 1,000, excuse me, a total of $169,461 will be allocated for program delivery for the housing rehab activities. We're budgeting $30,482 for the home buyer activity. This is the required 15% of the home allocation that needs to go to a certified housing development organization or a CHODO. These funds are typically used toward the cost of construction of new homes, and this project will be undertaken by one of the city's two certified CHodos, either Lycoming Neighborhood Development Corporation or Greater Lycoming Habitat for Humanity. You'll notice that we did not budget any funding for codes enforcement in 2020. We funded the codes activity in designated areas for several years, and we feel it's important to do a reassessment of those areas to evaluate what areas have the greatest need before we commit any additional funding. We're funding clearance and blight elimination for $15,000 of CDBG funds. This will be for the properties that are determined by the codes department to be blighted and in need of demolition. Blight elimination program delivery will be budgeted for $4,607. And both the CDBG and home programs are subject to administrative caps. Program administration will be funded with CDBG funds in the amount of $200,832. The home program administration will be funded for $20,322. These amounts both adhere to the cap requirements. The total budget for both the CDBG and home programs, including program income, is $1,322,372. This budget was reviewed by the finance committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Who was there?
Yes, it was brought to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from council members? I only have to say that we're very appreciative of Mrs. Young for the fine work that you do and have carried on that department for so many years. This is federal taxpayer money, and it's wonderful to see it well spent for so many different needs and the creative ways that our department comes up, your department comes up with to apply it. And it's really benefited our city in so many different ways, but it's kind of, it kind of moves under the radar. It doesn't get the, it doesn't get the, all the dash and flash and splash, but it's very instrumental in the, in keeping our city sound and safe and better, making it a better place in a lot of different ways for a lot of people, so we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes.
I have a question, Stephanie. The removal of the architectural barriers, which is ADA accessibility with sidewalks, it's 20 new curb ramps that are going to be done. Do you know how many there are to be done yet within this city?
Adam? I know, it seemed to me when John Greto was here, the list was endless. You know, we just, it just, you know, was ongoing. Is that right? Is that correct?
Very much accurate.
Okay. I know we've done an awful lot, and I was wondering...
But they constantly change the criteria.
Right.
It must be...
Oh.
It wasn't a curb ramp, and now there's truncated domes to help with direction of which way you're supposed to walk off the curb ramp. It's constantly evolving with new criteria, so it's just a never-ending cycle.
So we'll see 20 years on, or 20 new ramp curbs on this budget for the next 200 years. Okay, thanks.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Henderson?
I was just going to make a few comments unless you wanted to continue that.
Well, Mr. Winder, when they make changes to the law, do the older ramps that were redone have to be redone?
Generally, as one would be replaced, you can broke in and damaged the criteria.
All right. Thanks. Mr. Henderson?
I just wanted to say it's good to see some investment in our parks. I think that's much needed, just as we were investing in the ban shell this year. It'll be good to see some more investment in those parks. And then also just a note on the SPCA, that amount has gone up since last year, and I was part of a group of individuals. We were working on some solutions for the cat issues in the city. And one solution that we've explored is a trap neuter release program, which seems to be in many ways more effective than just putting together some kind of cat ordinance and trying to chase the cats down. And so, you know, it's easy to make a law, hard to enforce. And so this seems to be perhaps a viable solution, at least to begin to address some of those issues. And so the added fundage here is, I think, going to really help with that, and we're hopeful. There are two groups involved in that, perhaps even more, but I think there's great potential for that as well. So I just wanted to make note of that, and I'm excited to see these expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz?
Just to add on to what you were saying, Councilman Henderson, the catch and release, you, the SPCA will rent you a cage for a deposit of $50. You catch the cat, you take them there, they neuter the cats, and you get your deposit back on the, on the, the trap. And I know it's worked in my neighborhood. It's something that is really cleaning up the city tremendously, and if more neighborhoods would do this, we'd have less of a problem. And I think it's great that they are doing this because it was, as they said at the meeting of finance, that it was very hard on the people that worked at the SPCA to destroy the cats. This way, we're being more human with the cats at this point. So I, you know, it is beneficial.
No other questions or comments? Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. It passes on its first reading, so we will see this again. Item seven, resolution to approve a subrecipient agreement. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution to approve a subrecipient monitoring agreement between the county of Lycoming and the city of Williamsport.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
No, ma'am. Second.
Motion in a second. Mrs. Young?
Yes, this agreement is with Lycoming County for $200,000 of Fair Funds for the rehabilitation of rental properties in the Park Avenue neighborhood. And I did leave a map there for everybody, but the Park Avenue neighborhood generally includes the area bounded by Campbell Street on the west, Brandon Avenue to Walnut Street to Park Court on the north, Market Street on the east, and Little League Boulevard in the south. Just a reminder, some of the Fair program requirements, 30% of the $200,000 must be used to benefit households that are at or below 50% of the Lycoming County 2018 area median income. The remainder of the Fair Funds can be used to benefit households with incomes from 50 to 200% of the area median income. And also, all assisted rental units must be affordable to lower-income households based on HUD's 2018 fair market rents. The maximum project amount is 25,000, and the program requires a 15%, contribution from the property owner. Funds will be provided at a 0% interest rate with a 10-year forgiveness term. Also, just to note, Lycoming County is working with STEP to try to receive funding for the Homes and Needs Program that focuses on owner-occupied housing, so this would just be rental housing. So we're hoping to roll out a comprehensive program for housing rehab in the Park Avenue neighborhood, very similar to what we did in the Broadart neighborhood. And this agreement was reviewed by the finance committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Any...
It was, it was, I have a hard time...
Okay.
Let Jerry do it. I'm losing my voice.
Yeah, well...
It was passed with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. And I just, for those who are watching on TV, they hear Fair Fund is an acronym, and they may not know what that stands for. It's the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund. How is the Fair Fund funded?
It's through PHFA, Pennsylvania Housing Financing Agency, and it's through the taxes that are, from the gas tax, that, so I think each municipality gets certain funding because of the Act, no, not Act 13, but, yeah.
Yeah. So just some background on where, what that money is and where it comes from.
I think it was good to note, you had told us that 77% of the housing in that section of the city are rentals.
Right. When we had our consultants come in and do the plan for the Park Avenue neighborhood, that's what they discovered, that 77% were rentals. And so there's definitely no question there will be, we'll be meeting a need, and we won't have any problem meeting that 30% of the 50% median income. We'll be fine with that, I'm sure.
Yeah. It's a nice adjunct to that, that plan and getting something moving in that area.
Especially if we can get STEP on board. That was a great program in the Broadart neighborhood. We really, I think, made a difference. You could see an impact there.
Mm-hmm. Yes, thank you. Other comments or questions from council? Hearing none on the resolution. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Motion passes. Item eight, resolution authorizing Lycoming County to submit an H2OPA grant. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
A resolution authorizing Lycoming County to submit an H2OPA application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority on behalf of the city of Williamsport.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Winder.
Good evening. This is a resolution branching... This is a resolution branching from the MOU that we had created between the county and the city on July 23rd. This resolution would basically allow Lycoming County to submit, on behalf of the city, for an H-2OPA grant, which would be for the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars to assist with the repairs to the cross pipes within the section of the levee. If you remember, we actually were applying for Act 13 grants, which unfortunately, money had fell short there for the state, so it was by their suggestion that we would apply for the H-2OPA grant. This was reviewed by Finance and passed with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. Passed Finance with a positive recommendation?
Yeah, Finance passed it on with a positive recommendation, the full body of council.
Questions or comments from council tonight?
I think there was some, one thing, they talked about the, in the letter that received the borough of South Williamsport approved the same resolution at their September meeting. They had the same kind of work done, but at a different level than what we did. We had, ours will be much more extensive once there was a levy.
So it's another piece of the, the levy puzzle that, that we're hoping, that we're getting here, applying for. Hearing no other questions. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Winder. Item 10, demolition, 2680 Reach Road. Mr. Girardi.
Yes, good evening, President. Allison, a member of council. What you have before you is a request for demolition for Tom Fulmer for the structure located, and I, the address I was incorrect on, is actually 2868 Reach Road, located in an ML industrial zoning district. The structure was used for a restaurant and has been vacant on and off for several years. The owner intends to construct a garage there to be used, a heated structure to be used for tanker trucks, or water trucks are used in the facility for gas industry. And he'll have to plant grass and so forth until that particular, until that time comes where he comes through with a development plan. And we do have representatives here, if you want to ask them any questions, or myself. And I did attach a photo of the building that's being torn down.
Oh, yeah, I remember looking at that, the former restaurant.
Yes.
Is there a motion in second, council?
Motion.
Second.
Yes.
It was a great restaurant at one time.
It was a hot spot.
Yeah. I think many of us have happy memories from there.
Yeah. But time moves on and things change, so.
That's correct.
No other discussion or questions? Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry you had to wait through all that, we had to, busy agenda ahead of you. Item 11, certificate appropriateness for 11 West Fourth Street.
Yes, what you have before you is a certificate appropriateness, appropriateness request for Ernie Cafe. He requests to put two business identification signs on the front of the windows. I have attached a photo, I attached a photo for additional information and the color scheme. The gentleman did put them up, we made him cover them up until he had approval tonight. Along with that, I think there was a letter attached in there that we're sending out, which Mrs. Fosna was talking about. That letter's going out to all the owners of properties in the Central Business District to let them know that these are the things that need to be done prior to, okay? So I just wanted to make sure you knew that, that's what we did.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi.
Yes.
Comments or questions from council?
Is the person here?
No, he is not.
He's not here?
No. He was, he was informed that he was not required, but recommended that he come. Yep.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr., Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And finally, item 12, well, not finally, but action items, lot consolidation for 42 Washington Boulevard. Mr. Girardi.
Yes, what I bring before you is a lot consolidation for Calvary Baptist Church located at 42 Washington Boulevard. The current land is, is a place of worship and a parking lot. It is location, it is located in an institutional zoning district. The proposed plan is to consolidate four parcels of ground into one parcel. The new lot will consist of a church, parking lot, and contains about a half acre of ground. The church came before council, prior to this, for the demolition of the building. It has been ceded. The plan, the plan was reviewed by Lycoming County Planning and made positive recommendations for your approval. There's attached a copy of their comments. The comments that they, they did make on there have already been corrected and are correct for recording purposes. And our planning commission did review it, and they recommended a positive approval.
Great, thank you, Mr. Girardi. Comments, questions from council? We knew this was coming after we approved the demolition, so, and the, the traffic flows good and everything, so.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion in second. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
And if I could add one thing before I sit down and then have to come back up at the end of the day.
Right.
Though, real quick, the report that you did give from me, the things that were mentioned about the strobes, the projections, and heights and so forth, that is all covered in that report, okay? There's two sheets at the end. There are known costs that you see. Those are known costs that were given to me by different surveys, by Gannett Fleming concerning the heat, concerning the roof, and all that. That, and then, those are known costs. I mean, even the lock sets, how much they're going to cost, cost, I got them, that's with our guys putting them in. The last sheet, there was like five items that are estimated, because we don't have those numbers. Those are estimates that I came through, through square footages and what needs to be done to those rooms. So the numbers you have are the numbers that I have gathered from all the different surveys, everything that's done, supposed to be done to this building to make it code compliant and to make it safe and usable for about thirty years, okay? So that's, I just wanted to make sure you knew that when you looked through your packet, okay?
Well, I'm glad you brought it up. I guess one of the main questions I have was the, the estimate on the HVAC.
Correct.
That will totally.
No, the three hundred and seven thousand, that is just to update the pneumatic system to an electronic system. That is not air handlers, outside units.
Okay, that's what I, yeah.
Right. Those are the known facts that were given to me, okay? Other than the HVAC system, I'm pretty much sure that, other than the roof system, which we have in there for like two hundred and fifty, because that's what the other roof was.
Because I expected like a million, million and a half for the HVAC.
Right. You're probably talking about another six hundred thousand additional cost for those types of units.
I learned that another government agency in a building smaller than this, it's going to cost them roughly a hundred thousand dollars just to have the engineering work done for the HVAC system.
Okay.
If that gives you any idea of how expensive that can get.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
The drain leaders in the walls, everybody sees the walls melt down. You know, there's cast iron pipe that runs through the walls in multiple locations of this building. Essentially, they're leaking in the wall right now and putting moisture, the wall's about two foot thick, so it's building an excessive amount of moisture, which is then melting down the drywall. We did do one repair on the first floor later, earlier this year, to the drain leader. They really need to go out through the stone and to the ground and actually flow, the water flow into the ground directly versus coming down through the walls. It's going to be very expensive. I mean, you're talking boring a hole through a two-foot piece of stone, that if they break the stone, they now have to replace it.
Doesn't sound like a lot of fun. Not to try to dig into it too far, but is, is there a way to inspect them in place with?
The drain leaders?
Yeah.
We attempted to camera them, and there's so many Ys and branches that.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of.
You would never cover it all.
Yeah, it's not like a solar roll or something, you can run the line down and see it sneaking down through, because of the turns.
It's like.
And like, I know Mr. Girardi has the front part of the roof in his packet, but there's also slate that came off the new section in the rear earlier this year during a storm that needs to be repaired.
Okay.
Every day, we're finding more and more things wrong. I can tell you, when I first got into management here, I did an assessment of this building with Dan Markley, who has forty years invested in the city, so he's been working on this building since the city has bought it. And you would not believe the amount of work this building really needs.
Mm-hmm. And so, Mr. Girardi, we, thank you for your report. It was, and, you know, those figures I have confidence in, other than my question on, on the HVAC.
Sure.
But it's the kinds of things that Mr. Winder's talking about that are unknowable at this point, like you said, estimates and everything, that have kept us kind of.
Right. And the other thing, though, you do, you have to take into account, too, it's just like anything, the unknowns are always going to be the unknowns.
Absolutely.
Once you do so much work through your building, next thing you know, you may have a plumbing break.
Right.
I mean, that happens in life, it happens at your home.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm replacing my roof in my house, because I have a leak. I mean, it's not what I want to do, and that's why, I understand what you're saying, but those are things that are going to occur in any building you own.
Yeah, and the older, the more there are.
Exactly, yep.
That's the main thing. And that's why they always say it's cheaper to build new than sometimes renovate. Any other comments on that? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 13, except for filing, ad hoc ethics committee minutes of August 13th, 2019, finance committee minutes, July 30th, 2019, and August 27th, 2019, public works minutes, July 16th, 2019, and August 27th, 2019, and our third quarter financial statement. Announcements, our next city council meeting will be Thursday, November 21st, at 7:30 PM.
Excuse me, Randy, we need a motion to accept the minutes for filing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm in a hurry. Not really, but.
Now a vote?
It's been a busy night, yeah. Boy.
Yeah, you did, aye.
I took a voice vote.
Okay.
So upcoming meetings, Monday, November 11th, City Hall will be closed for Veterans Day. Tuesday, November 12th, 12:00 PM is the Planning Commission, 3:30 PM ERC, 7:00 PM Citizens Corps. Wednesday, November 13th, 11:30 AM, the Redevelopment Authority. Thursday, November 14th, there'll be a blood drive here in the Secular Room. So those who are so inclined, please put that on your calendar. Monday, November 18th, 4:00 PM, there's a Recreation Commission meeting. Tuesday, November 19th, at 10:00 AM, the Blighted Property Committee. 12:00 PM, Historical Preservation. 1:00 PM, Finance Committee. 2:30 PM, Public Works. 3:30 PM, Public Safety. Thursday, November 21st, 10:30 AM, Zoning Hearing Board, and 4:00 PM, the Board of Health. Any comments or questions tonight from council?
I have one thing. We had Ms. Nagy speak to us at the Finance Committee about the insurance updates, and they were very positive. So Travelers has been really helpful in expenses with what they've been able to find. And I just want to thank council for moving on the fact that we put it out for bids and insurance. Because we did that, that was very responsible to this community, to be able to save some money. And she had an excellent report on where we are with our insurance.
That's good news. Thank you, Mrs. Fosna. Other comments from council? Comments from administration tonight? Comments from the public? Now, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.